Thank you. Item two on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Any additions, deletions?
There are a couple of deletions. Under consensus, item C should be deleted. Now that everything's on the one-year contract, that'll roll to the regular personnel agenda for teachers. Under 11, I'd like to add item C, Wrightsboro Boiler Replacements. And then, under announcements, which is 17, the work session will be July 17th, not the 15th. And I appreciate you guys working me on that one.
I move for approval of the revised agenda.
Second. Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed. It's approved. Thank you. Item three, approval of the minutes. You gonna do these all together or one at a time?
All together.
Any objection to doing them all together? Motion to approve the minutes?
I move that we approve minutes A through E.
Second.
And this would be special meetings from May 13th, May 20th, June the 3rd, June the 3rd, and June the 18th. We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions?
I did have, I thought I saw a grammatical error in one of those meetings, minutes. I'm trying to determine which one it was. I think it was the Masonboro group was misspelled. It was with a W at the end. And I can't seem to find it at the moment.
But we'll have to check it.
If you don't, yeah.
Approval.
That was the only thing.
Not as the correction. Grammatical error. Anything else?
Such as correction.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed. I dare approve. Recognition of achievement, item four.
For our first recognition this evening, we will recognize two Hogarth High School teams who recently took the top two places in the Authors on America contest, which was sponsored by the North Carolina Bar Association. These students will have their works published for use in the Lawyers for Literacy program. As I say your name, would you please come forward so that we may recognize you? First place winners for their work entitled "Elections at the Zoo" are Miguel Chavez and Christopher Stojanoff. Thank you. And our second place winners for their work entitled "Three Branches of Government" are Lilly Lee and Madeline Minehold. Lilly was unable to be here with us tonight, but is Madeline here? And our next award is really sweet. We want to recognize our Transportation Department for their humanitarianism that was shown to another school district in their time of need. Allegheny County students and their staffs recently found themselves stranded here in Wilmington after their charter bus broke down during a field trip. So an Allegheny County school representative contacted our Transportation Department and explained their dilemma. And without a moment's notice, our Ken Nance, Director of Transportation, offered to loan them two air-conditioned activity buses and four drivers to get their students safely back home. The four drivers took turns driving through the night on this 16-hour round-trip rescue mission. So we want to recognize our heroes. So I will ask Mr. Ken Nance to come forward, and also the four drivers. I think three of them are here. And they are, the drivers are Sarah Barnett, Richard Johnson could not be here, Mr. Stacy Thank you, Transportation Department.[501.12][501.12](applause) And this gesture was so nice that our local newspaper wrote an editorial about it. And it attracted the attention of one of our prominent citizens, Mr. Chuck Dean. And so Mr. Dean is here, who will also make a special presentation for us at this time. Mr. Dean.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the New Hanover County Board of Education. My wife, Mary, and I are here tonight to thank and compliment each of you for your service to our community and to the education of most of the children in our county. Not only in the three Rs, but something far more important to the development of good citizens. I'm speaking of the Golden Rule. Seldom has it been carried out with as much zeal as it was by a number of people in the New Hanover County school system and by other good Samaritans in Wilmington on the 9th of May this year. A heartwarming article about it appeared in the Star News Option Page, Opinion Page, a week later, that Mrs. Quattlebaum just mentioned. Its title was Perspectives, with a subtitle, "An Unexpected Education." My dear wife, Mary, and I were so impressed that we reproduced and framed it on one side of a double-faced presentation frame we make from exotic hardwoods. The other side is reserved for a certificate of appreciation I will read in a minute or so. Mrs. Quattlebaum, where is she? She's right behind her. She only gave, she gave me three minutes, so I gotta talk fast. And for a southern boy, that's sometimes difficult.[622.11][622.11](laughing) But I'm gonna try. And you can kick me if necessary. Anyway, our unique design is based on a 100-year-old family heirloom in which pictures of, my finger's not working now, pictures of my grandparents appear back-to-back in a uniquely-designed frame that revolves on a presentation base. We've updated the design and are making one model that revolves in an updated, patent-pending version, and one that doesn't. Both are shown on an internet website created by our son, Matthew, which is named FineWoodDesigns.net. Our endeavor is dedicated to preserving precious memories. Indeed, the reason for our being here tonight is to do just that with a presentation of one of our frames to the Honorable Don Hayes. And to recognize and thank each of you on the board, the Director of Transportation, Mr. Nance, Mr. Hance, his staff members and bus drivers, other members of the New Hanover County school system, unless they go unrecognized, the Good Samaritans at heart ease by UNCW and the Church of Latter-day Saints. The combined outreach and kindness of all those Good Samaritans was an exemplary example of living the Golden Rule. And we thank everyone involved with that wonderful outreach. Finally, I'd like to read the citation for Mr. Hayes. It's a certificate of appreciation presented to the Honorable Don S. Hayes, Donald S. Hayes, Chairman, New Hanover County Board of Education, in recognition of his 20 years of service building educational excellence, the spirit of giving, and the Golden Rule, in his leadership of teachers, administrators, and support staff in New Hanover County, in the New Hanover County school system. From grateful citizens, June the 3rd, 2014. That's because we came up with this heartfelt idea, too late to make it for the last meeting. So Mrs. Quattlebaum was kind enough to get it on this one, so I'll step around here if I may, present it to a 20-year veteran of service at schools, to our children.
Once again, I'd like to congratulate everybody and thank the deans for being here. It was a very nice gesture on the part of you and representing citizens of the county. We appreciate it. Our next item on the agenda, item five, is our call to the audience. First name looks very familiar. We're pleased to have Ms. Beth Dawson, Vice Chair of the County Commissioners here. Beth, you're our first speaker.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Hayes, Vice Chairman Nichols, and members of the Board of Education. My name is Beth Dawson, and I serve as the County Commissioner Representative to the Wilmington Regional Film Commission. I'm here this evening to speak on your agenda item regarding the proposed change to policy 4500, Facility Use Fees in Item One, that would impact film and television production companies' use of school facilities. Advocacy for issues important to our county such as education, teacher salaries, school construction funding, as well as advocacy for the economic vitality of our county, which includes the retention and recruitment of business and jobs, as well as the promotion and support of the film industry, are among the top priorities in the New Hanover County's legislative agenda. The film industry and the hundreds of citizens that it employs and businesses that it supports have an immense impact on the economy of New Hanover County. We have a well-trained workforce that have chosen to live here, raise their families, educate their children, and contribute to the tax base of our county. Years ago, policymakers in our community, with the Board of Education, New Hanover County, and the City of Wilmington, made a collaborative decision not to charge production companies for the use of public facilities. This was a united message that New Hanover County is open for business and welcomes the film industry. Just this year to date, productions have spent nearly $160 million in our local economy and are on target to surpass last year's totals. In 2013 and 2014 to date, New Hanover County facilities have hosted over four dozen days of film and television productions in New Hanover County facilities. The unanticipated return on this investment of goodwill has resulted in direct contributions to our schools, our library, and our parks from the production companies who recognize and appreciate the importance of our partnership. Just since this past March, production companies have made donations to New Hanover County schools of nearly $40,000, and have contributed to the New Hanover County Parks Conservancy and our public library. I would dare to speculate that the amount of the return that we have received is equal to or more than any anticipated proposed charges would be. In conclusion, I respectfully request that the New Hanover County Board of Education continue your partnership with New Hanover County and the City of Wilmington, and retain and continue your current policy of not charging facility use fees to the film and television production companies for the use of school facilities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, Speaker Johnny Griffin.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Vice Chairman, Board, Staff. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. My name is Johnny Griffin. I'm the Director of the Wilmington Regional Film Commission. I as well. I'm here to speak regarding the Facility Use Policy 4500 as it relates to film and television companies' use of school property. To give you maybe a little bit of history or perspective for some that might not have been around, probably back about 14 years ago, when the city and the county and the state instituted this, I worked with Ed Higgins at the time on the school board to get the school system to go along with this policy as well. Again, as Ms. Dawson had mentioned, to basically show that the county is receptive, open for doing business, and trying to recruit these productions to come into the area. At the time that we did that, we also started encouraging these productions to actually make donations. And I know it may sound a little bit odd that we're saying, "Don't pay a fee, but yet give a donation," but it's just the concept of it. And they certainly have no problem doing that. They've been doing that through the years. The schools have had a long relationship with the film industry, started many years ago with the success of Dawson's Creek, One Tree Hill. And as a result of that, the way our business works, people hear about those shows, people hear about other shows that have shot here at some of our schools, and they will contact us and say, "We hear that filming in schools in your county is a good experience, that it's very easy, the staff is great to work with, and we have a project that we would like to bring there." And so strangely enough, the schools end up becoming an economic driver for us in helping us to be able to recruit business. To give you an idea of where they have spent money just this year so far, again, since March, productions have donated about $35,000 to $40,000. They don't make a big scene about it. One of the productions was going to, or did present a check to the county. They were asked to come and make a public presentation. They denied. It's not the way they do business. They don't try and get the spotlight on themselves. So unfortunately, you missed the opportunity to see that. Ashley High School this year had five days of filming on one particular project. They donated $20,000 to the school, about $3,500 in another donation to the band, and then some athletic equipment that was purchased to replace damaged and worn equipment. Roland Greis Middle School had a project one day that shot there for six hours. They donated $1,000 to the school. They also gave the school a $500 gift certificate to get treats for kids during the last week of school. I think they had an ice cream truck or something come to let the kids have that. New Hanover High School, currently we have a TV series filming in town that has filmed there four times this year. Each time that they go there, they donate $1,000 to the school. Hogarth High School, this is the one that actually got a little bit of attention in the media as filming there and not paying a fee. Unfortunately, what the press did not show was that they actually made a donation of $5,000 to the school. Murrayville Elementary School has rented their parking lot for a production that actually shoots nearby in some woods and fields, and they're able to use the parking lot for filming, and they've received $2,000 for that. So it's been a good relationship. We've appreciated it, and I would just like to respectfully ask that the Board consider keeping the policy as it currently stands and allowing both entities to benefit. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Ason Saffo. Guess he's watching. Are you Ason?
Hi, my name's Ason Saffo, and I'd just like to talk about the teacher survey at Ashley. And I just hope you all look into what is going on at Ashley with the treatment of teachers. And I heard this week that geometry teacher, Mr. Christner, is being moved to another school by our principal. He was our toughest teacher I had this year, and he's been at Ashley for over 10 years. He's the type of teacher I'll remember because of how high he set the bar for me and how hard I had to work in his course. He came to school every morning and tutoring and stayed most afternoons with, not just for his students, but any students that needed tutoring after school. And I can't imagine any school that would want to lose a teacher like him. And I just, please help us keep our teachers at Ashley. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person, the full name listed is M.A., so I assume that's some kind of an abbreviation or M.A. M.A., are you here?
Thank you.
Okay. Next, item on the agenda, item six. A is administrative recommendations of minutes, Dr. Markley.
All right. It's my pleasure tonight to make several administrative recommendations. We will start with Bradley Creek Elementary School. The current principal there has moved over to Holly Shelter, and with, it's my pleasure to recommend Lauren Kephalitis to be the principal. She is currently the Assistant Principal at Cottington, and prior to her appointment as the Assistant Principal in 2007, she served as a teacher at the Wilmington Academy of Arts and Sciences. Her administrative contract will be in effect until June 30th, 2016. She received her doctorate in educational leadership and a master's degree in school administration from UNCW, and a bachelor's degree from Mullenberg College in Allentown, Pennsylvania.
That would be Mullenberg.
Mullenberg. I stand corrected.
Motion to approve. Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Kephalitis is here tonight. If she'll stand.
Well, we haven't voted yet.
Excuse me.
All those in favor, any comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
I don't have a comment.
You have a comment?
I have a comment.
Go ahead, Dr. Hickey. What's your comment?
The comment I have is the comments I expressed to Lauren prior to the meeting, that I'm sure she's gonna make an excellent principal. And I'm very pleased, having worked with her in the past with my own children, that she's getting her own school.
And Lauren, if you'll stand, and you've got some folks with you.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.[1530.14][1530.14](laughing)
Now, go ahead.
All right, let's try this again.
That makes it official.
Yeah, I have my husband, Mark, and my son, Nathaniel. And so, you can have a county school family, Mr. Furman.
Mr. Furman's the principal currently at Cottington.
Thank you.
Nathaniel's got a birthday coming up, right?[1548.64][1548.64](applause)
Our second recommendation will be Castle Hayne Elementary School. It's my pleasure to recommend Cindy Bliss. Ms. Bliss is currently Assistant Principal at Murray Middle, and prior to her appointment as there, she served as an administrative intern at Laney and at Murray. As a teacher, she taught middle school science and social studies, and her contract will be in effect until June 30th, 2016. She received her master's degree from the University of North Carolina at Wilmington, and her bachelor's from the University of Albany, State University of New York.
Motion to approve?
Second. I'll make the motion.
Okay.[1589.74][1589.74](laughing)
Okay. Comments, questions? Dr. Hickey, ever comment on this?
No, I'm just, SUNY Albany, I'm from New York, and Mullenberg, I have friends from Allentown, you know, just, it's very interesting to find out where people are actually from.
Yeah, that's true. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It's approved.
Ms. Bliss is here. She had our children who were very participative in our pledge.
Oh, okay.
Cindy, who do you got with you?
I've got my daughter, Maya, my husband, Toby, my daughter, Olivia, my daughter, Malia, and my son, Jack. So, thank you very much. I'm very happy to serve you all.[1629.14][1629.14](applause)
And I'm glad to see how well they know the Pledge of Allegiance. I was really impressed.
I can't spell it.
There you go. We do it every morning, right? People forget that. They say, "We don't do the Pledge of Allegiance in schools anymore." I say, "Oh, no. In this county, we start the day in every one of our schools with the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence." So they're doing a good job.
Both of those are immediate recommendations. Our third recommendation, Paul's gonna have to wait until December to start his new position, but I'd like to recommend Paul Slovic as the new principal at Winter Park Elementary. Currently, Mr. Slovic is an Assistant Principal at Winter Park. He has served as an Assistant Principal at Gregory and Bradley Creek in the past. He also taught at Bradley Creek Elementary School. Mr. Slovic's contract will begin December 1st and be in effect till June 30th, 2016. He received his master's degree in school administration from the University of North Carolina Wilmington, and his bachelor's degree from Belmont Abbey College.
I move for approval. I have a question, Dr. Markley.
Yes.
Why until December?
That's when the current principal, her retirement is effective in December.
Okay. So even though he was there acting as principal, he won't actually?
No, he will not, he will not become the acting principal until December 1st.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I second the motion.
Any other comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed?
All right, Mr. Slovic, you got some folks with you?
Yes, sir. I have my wife, Melissa, my daughter, Maya, and my son, Jake, here, who are both currently students at Winter Park and are excited to continue.[1722.14][1722.14](laughing)
Thank you.[1724.14][1724.14](applause)
And with Mr. Slovic, and sitting right behind him is Ms. Monica Goza, who's the current principal at Winter Park, who will be retiring in December.
Monica, I had no idea. Anything you want to say? I was surprised when I saw.
I thank you for the opportunity to ask. I've had a great experience here all, and this is the only county I've worked for, and you all have allowed me to have various positions since I've been in the system. And I just feel like it's time to do something a little different, spend more time with my family, and I thank you.
Well, I know you're not retiring. I know I'll see you somewhere, UNCW or consulting or something. I know you're not gonna retire.
I'll see you next June at the fifth grade presentation that Mr. Slovic will pose with Sarah Hodges when he may present that class with Winter Park, remember?
Good. Good. Thank you.
Our final recommendation of the evening is for the Assistant Principal at New Hanover High School, and the person we recommended is David Bittner. He's currently an Assistant Principal at the Early College in Brunswick. He previously taught English at Pender High and Topsail High in Pender County. He did complete his administrative internship with us last year at Williston and Cape Hill Elementary School. Mr. Bittner's contract will be in effect until June 30th, 2016. Mr. Bittner's contract will be in effect until June 30th, 2016. He received his bachelor's degree in English and secondary ed, and a master's degree in school administration, all from UNCW.
I move for approval.
Second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed?
Mr. Bittner is here tonight.
Thank you very much.
Who do you have with you?
Uh, Miss Monica Adams.
Also with him tonight is the principal, Mr. McAdams from New Hanover.
That it?
That's it.
Okay. All right, next item on the agenda, item seven, Head Start.
All right, this item is on the agenda, and you'll talk, you'll discuss this when you get into the policy updates. This will be a new item on the agenda every month. Since we picked up the Head Start grant, we in effect become the Board of Directors for Head Start, so this will be an ongoing agenda item. If there's business under there, we'll list it so you can see that. And we will actually have to post this as a, when we post for our regular meeting, we'll also post for Head Start. So we'll do a double posting on those occasions.
Is there any item for action?
No item for action tonight.
Thank you.
Just wanted to let you know it was coming so you could start seeing it. At your work session on the 17th, we'll do a Head Start board training.
Next item on the agenda, item eight, under information, item A, Policies for First Reading, Mrs. Nichols.
Well, the first policy, 1320, is the agenda format, and as Dr. Markley said, we're adding Head Start, so I would ask that we waive first reading and go ahead and approve this, so we'll be in sync with the agenda format. Motion for approval, second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Okay, so we'll waive it for the first reading on 1320.
The next, the second policy for first reading for information is Policy 4500, Community Schools, Community Use of School Property and Facilities. This policy was brought to the policy committee by Mrs. Eastep, who is on the committee, and so I'm going to ask if she will present this reading.
The reason I brought this before the policy committee was just to start the discussion. When I was at Hoggard, I noticed that there was some filming going on, and so I asked for some background on what the policy was in terms of charging for facility use. My feeling is, I would like to see us, and I think I'm in the minority on this, I would like to see the facilities opened and up to everyone, and have the policy be consistent for all of our community members, all PPD, Corning, whoever wants to come in, I would love to see us open the facilities as much as we can, rather than carve out an exception for just one. I want everyone to know that they're welcome. So that's why I brought it before the committee, and then the discussion kind of went from there.
Mrs. Eastep, does the policy as proposed, does it charge a fee to everyone, or?
Yes, I was overruled in the policy committee, and the feeling was that they took away the one sentence that carved out an exception for the film industry. So that was really the only change that was made.
Mr. Chairman, I move that this policy be written in such a way to allow use of the film industry for our schools without charging them, because as has been said in the public comments, we have been rewarded by the companies, by gifts and contributions, and I'd hate for us to turn someone away that could possibly help our school system.
But what happens if, say, you know, DuPont wants to come and do something at our schools? Do we not treat them the same?
No.
We don't? Why not?
Because DuPont is not as much of a generator of income and experience for the schools. The film industry presents a unique opportunity for our school, our students and our school personnel, and the school itself, to be rewarded.
PPD, PPD bought uniforms for Virgo, would we not carve out an exception for them?
I have no problem with them contributing uniforms.
But do any of these places, because I'm not that familiar with the numbers, but did Mr. Hance put some numbers together about what we would have been, how we would have benefited? Because my knowledge always has been, in just hearing comments in the past, that whenever any of our facilities were used, they paid custodians, whatever, any expense associated with that, and that we always really walked away better than we were because, and I've heard painting, all types of improvements have been made in schools by groups, by the film industry that was using it, plus the donations, and I don't know what those amounts are, but I don't think, to me, it's not a, PPD, for example, when would they ever use our facility? I mean, I can't, I know they do a lot of volunteer work, they do, just like GE, with the GE program and things of that nature, but I don't know that...
Well, if it's free, I would imagine they would use it more often. Would they not?
I'm just, I'm bringing forth the question, because I know that, I just, I didn't think it would be appropriate to wait, if I had the question, that means somebody online was going to have the question, you know, why do we not open it up for other industries as well? So that's why, you know, I wanted to start the conversation.
And I think if you're going to start comparing the contribution to the community from different businesses, then we need to sit down and crunch the numbers. I mean, you're talking about PPD, how many people does PPD employ, and what contribution do they make to the tax base? And so, you know, my concern is, and I know, Lisi, you had talked about opening it up to everyone, and I wouldn't be opposed to that, the only, the only problem that I have with that is that the more the facilities are used, the more maintenance is required, the more cost it will be to us. And so when we're talking about, you know, a bond referendum on the ballot in the fall, you know, that's just, to me, that's not fiscally responsible. And, you know, I don't understand why we're allowing one industry, you know, a pass when everyone else, if they want to use the facility, including nonprofit organizations. And let's be clear, we're not bound legally to waive these fees, the New Hanover County government is, but we're not. So, you know, I just, I don't see why we're giving one industry a pass over another. And I think if we're going to open it up to everyone, fine, or we close it to everyone. I think it's fair.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I agree with Ms. Eastep, as well as with Ms. Dawson, who's still with us in the audience. You know, I think that, and I've said this in prior meetings, that these school buildings belong to the community. And so, and again, I don't see it as a fiscally irresponsible endeavor to invite the community to use our schools, because it belongs to the taxpayers. But going a step further to echo Ms. Dawson, you know, that the film industry is vitally important to Wilmington and New Hanover County, maybe not so much in other parts of the state, but it does bring in a lot of economic revenue to New Hanover County. And, you know, we want to have the sign up that this area welcomes the film industry. Now, we did talk about this with Mr. Hance in the policy meeting, I attended this policy meeting, and Mr. Hance did confirm that, you know, that the film industry over the years has contributed at least as much in contributions as we would have received from actually charging them facility fees. And one of the things that I suggested, you know, using a model that many organizations use, is that if a filming company decides to use one of our facilities, you know, we might provide them with what it would have cost if we had charged them for it, sort of a suggested donation, if you will, but not an actual fee. And, you know, I think the film industry has been very generous with the school system in the past, and so I agree with Ms. Dawson, I also agree with Ms. Eastep, and, you know, I know this is just first reading, but rather than just bring this forward to, well, I guess we are discussing it, but to change it, and the only change being to eliminate the film industry, maybe we should bring this entire thing back to policy and discuss the financial ramifications of opening it up to all, you know, nonprofit groups and businesses in the community who have the required liability insurance. Maybe we just, you know, bring it back to policy and let this be a more thorough discussion rather than just striking a line and singling out the film industry.
I have a second concern regarding the policy, and that's restricting any organization to one year of use of our facilities. If they have been good stewards and have taken care of our facilities and have not caused problems, I don't see why we couldn't allow them to go past one year. And I misspoke whenever Ms. Eastep was asking me about PPD and DuPont. I don't have a problem with granting businesses an exception, I just don't know how to word it. So I assumed that the policy committee could.
I think, I agree with Dr. Hickey, and that was, what I was going to suggest, was refer it back to the policy committee and work on it, because there are other exceptions in the policy for nonprofit groups, things like that, it might be something the policy committee wants to revisit and bring back to the board.
And the other changes were just legal changes that Mr. Bullard recommended, that the policy then becomes more current with terms, and we certainly put some links there that makes it easier for the readers who go to that policy. Mr. Hance, would you like to make any kind of comment for the board's consideration for the committee?
If we referred back to the committee, we can discuss all the matters that have been brought forward at this time.
So you'll have additional information for the committee?
There's not much additional information, other than what we've already submitted. But the only, like you said, we've made some other changes that Mr. Bullard has recommended, but the main significant change was the deletion of the sentence allowing no fees to be charged for the film industry. That was the main, the main point that was at issue here, and Dr. Hickey is absolutely correct, over a five-year period, we would have only charged the film industry, based on our fees, a total of about sixty-five thousand dollars, that's over a five-year period. And in a short period of two years or less, the film industry has made donations in excess of forty thousand to the school system. We don't have a roster of the, or a compilation of the donations that have been made, because some of them are made directly to the school, and they don't come through us, so we don't have a compilation of the total donations over a five-year period that have been made. But I would easily, I could easily say, having dealt with it for those five years, that it would be in excess of the amount we would have charged the film industry in fees.
So could we make a stipulation that the donations, the suggested donations, as Dr. Hickey calls it, go to the general fund rather than be donated to the specific school, so that we can direct those funds as the school system needs them? Because that's my concern, when we talk about teacher raises and teacher salaries, and trying to give, you know, salary increases, and we're looking at cutting budgets, I just don't understand why we're singling out one industry over the others, when we could be using those funds to offset some of those, some of those costs at the school level. I'm sure that the schools spent those funds wisely, but I think if we're going to allow that, then I think we should have some direction over where those monies are spent.
I move that we send the policy back to the policy committee, for them to possibly revise and re-present at a future date.
Second that motion.
I agree, Ms. Kavanaugh, I would say we'll just refer it back, I don't think we really need a motion to do that, just refer it back.
I just said that.
But to be clear, Mr. Hance, we do charge the film industry for any staff, or custodial staff, that's needed.
That's correct. Any direct fees to us for staff fees or anything of that nature, the film industry does reimburse us for that, and over the five-year period, we've collected about twenty-two thousand dollars of those types of fees. And we have a very good partnership with the film industry, they're a very good client to work for. And as far as the larger industries are concerned, we've never had a request from any of the other major industries in the southeast region of North Carolina for use of our facilities at all.
Do we have any data on nonprofits using our facilities?
We could compile it, we don't keep that as a separate item, but we could, we could look and see what that is and try to compile that.
Okay.
Take a while to put a spreadsheet together, but we could do that.
Come on, Bill, I know you can do it.
Well, there used to be a spreadsheet, because I've asked about that in the past, where like a homeowners association might use a room or something of that nature, they provide the insurance, they pay a small fee, and they pay custodials. I know we've had churches for quite a while that use our facilities, they pay the expense associated with that. And that's why I asked about PPD and some of those companies. I'm not aware that there's ever been a, you know, other than some small little organizations or whatever, that will have a camp of some type, maybe a Boy Scout troop or some group, I think a lot of them are church-related that use.
Right, but I think the purpose of the fee itself is intended to be somewhat of a deterrent, because of the additional cost in maintenance that would be required if we were to open up the buildings to everyone. And that's, you know, that's, I think that's why we haven't seen a significant number of people, you know, beating down our door, because they have to pay for it, that's the point.
I'll be quiet now.
Okay, so we'll send it back to the policy committee.
Okay, thank you.
Is that?
Yes, that's the first reading.
I don't think we voted to send it back to the policy committee, though, I thought we just had the motion, but...
I don't think we needed a motion at all.
I don't think we vote on it.
We just referred it back to the...
It was the first reading?
Yeah, it was for first reading, so...
All right, thank you.
Okay, item B, Gifted Advisory Report, Appendix C, Dr. LaShawn Smith.
Yes, the New Hanover County Schools...
The New Hanover County Schools Gifted Advisory Council was established to advise board the school board on matters related to gifted education in the district, and I've submitted for your information their annual report, and would welcome any questions that you may have in regards to that report.
Any questions? Don't think we have any questions.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Item C, 2014 North Carolina Teacher Working Condition Survey, Appendix D, Dr. LaShawn Smith.
I'm going to do my very best at multitasking, and I think that'll work, okay. Well, good evening to you all, and I thank you for the opportunity to share with you information regarding the 2014 North Carolina Working Condition Survey for New Hanover County Schools. This evening's presentation is just a brief overview of the results of the 2014 survey compared to similar questions on the 2012 survey. I'd like to begin with just a brief overview of the history of the survey. Since 2002, North Carolina has biannually assessed the working condition standards in North Carolina. These standards were developed in 1999 by the North Carolina Teaching Profession Standards Commission in an effort to address the issues of teacher attrition in the state. The standards were updated in 2011 and were also approved by the State Board of Education at that time. The survey is designed around eight primary constructs. I'm going to share information with you this evening on seven of those eight constructs. The first construct, time references the time that teachers have to plan and work collaboratively in their schools. The facilities and resources construct speaks to the availability of infrastructure... and resources construct speaks to the availability of infrastructure, technology in our schools, and other resources that are available to teachers to design lessons and to work, to design instructional, instruction for students. Community support and also in community engagement is related to the levels of parent involvement in our schools and also the, the level of community support that our teachers feel that they get from the, from the surrounding school community as well as the community as, as a whole. Managing student conduct speaks specifically to policies and practices within our schools. And then teacher leadership references the level of involvement that our teachers have in the decision-making at the school level. And then also, school leadership is a strong indicator of our school's abilities, ability to create mutually trusting environments for our students to, and our teachers to learn and work in. And then additionally, there is one construct for professional development, and this speaks to the quality learning opportunities that are available to our teachers within the district. And then also instructional practices and supports. And this is related to the data that our teachers receive and that help them to design and inform their instruction and improve practices in their classrooms. I think it's very important to note the level of participation. In order for the survey to be statistically relevant, we have to have at least 40% participation at either the district level or school site. The 82.5% participation actually represents an increase from the 2000 survey to the 2014 survey for our district. And I think it's also important to note that we actually had several schools that had 100% participation. I don't think we had any schools that were below the 40% threshold. So, we have data on all of our schools. I'm going to share with you just some district findings at this point. As I said earlier, I'm going to share with you just seven of our, of the eight constructs. I think it's also important to know that this represents just the average for the district. We typically look for a target at 80% or above, and we do have some schools, quite a few schools, that on several of the constructs and the different indicators within the construct actually have 100% agreement. And I think we should definitely celebrate those schools. In the area of facilities and resources, the results are relatively consistent when you look at the 2012 indicators and the, the 2014 responses. There is an increase in teacher perception around parent involvement and communication. I think that's extremely important. I know that that's a priority for many of our schools. We want to make sure that our parents feel involved. We want to make sure that our parents feel welcome in our school, and we understand the importance of communicating effectively with our schools. We did see a decrease when it comes to school environment is clean and well-made, well-maintained, though that is still above the, our initial target. I think here, some schools would probably acknowledge the fact that with increased populations, that it is definitely making it more difficult to maintain our schools as, as our, as our student population increases. So, that may be one of the indicators. But again, this represents an average for the Looking at managing student conduct, again, you see some, a lot of consistency between the 2012, 2014 scores or actually respondent rates. And here, we see increased agreement with teachers in terms of enforcement of school rules. So, we actually saw a slight increase in that area, but I think speaks very highly. Our teachers are working together very well to ensure that they're consistently maintaining the high standards that we have for all children within our district. And then also, we see a slight increase, although it's already at the above 90% respondent rate, well, positive respondent rate. We actually do also see an increase in the response of teachers when it comes to the faculty work in a school environment that is safe. And ours, as a district, we've invested quite a bit of, quite a bit of time and energy and focus into making sure that our families feel safe, our children feel safe, and also our employees feel safe in our school. That's something that, of course, that is extremely important to us. And so, it was very rewarding to see that as a response on the survey. And as I said, there are several schools in which this is at 100%. And looking at teacher leadership, unfortunately, the numbers in this construct are not trending in the direction that we would like them to be. But it, but in the areas of teachers are encouraged to participate in their leadership roles, we see that that actually remains above 90%. So, even though there's a slight decrease, more than 91% of the teachers who responded to the survey responded in agreement that teachers are encouraged to participate in leadership roles in their schools. Looking at school leadership, there's increased agreement when it comes to the shared vision. There's increased agreement when it comes to the school improvement team is effective or provides effective leadership in their school. So, even though we're seeing some areas where we're seeing some slight dips, we are still maintaining, and what I see is two very important areas, response, positive responses from our teaching staff that are in excess of 90, in eight, in excess of 80% in one and 90% in the other. One area that I will note, we did see a significant decrease when it came to teachers' responses around. The procedures for teacher evaluation are consistent. I would offer to you that I think a lot of that probably is related to the changes in the evaluation system and probably more specifically, the challenges around the new online tool. Unfortunately, it's been very unreliable for a lot of our administrators and a lot of our teachers. I see some folks actually nodding their heads in agreement with me. So, we're working through that as a state. It is not a district issue as a state. And hopefully, when we complete the 2016 survey, we'll see a significant increase in this area.
Additionally, there's a standard six that's now populated by the state based on state final exams and state EOCs, and there's a lot of concern about those state final exams and their validity in terms of teacher evaluation.
Yes. And, and actually, when it comes to teachers' responses around assessments, I think you're going to see that evidenced as, as well. And terms of professional development, I think it's important, even though we see slight dips in this area, I think it's very important to note that in at least two of these constructs, with two of these indicators, we see teacher agreement that's in excess of 80%. When it comes to professional development is differentiated to meet the individual needs of teachers, we have 91.8% of our teachers agreeing with that. And we work very hard as a professional development department, and I know schools have worked very hard in, in offering professional development to their teachers that is specific to them. An area that's a focus for us is professional development deepens teachers' content knowledge. We want to make sure that our teachers are comfortable in delivering instruction and have the content knowledge to support the strong design of that instruction. And as a response, the district is offering some very comprehensive PD this summer. And actually, I have some items to bring forth to you a little bit later in this meeting.
Ms. Smith, this.
Yes, ma'am.
This side, this slide disturbs me because the very first one dipped for at least 30%. It went down 30% in two years. The next slide.
I'm sorry. I apologize.
Do you have any indication of what it was that caused teachers to be so disturbed about this particular category?
Yes, ma'am. Very specifically, state assessment data are available and time to impact instructional practices. There was a huge delay this year from the state in the release of test scores for our, our district and across the state. We do not, well, that will not be the case this upcoming year. This was because the, the state had to set cut scores related to the new assessment. So, we're not surprised by that. What we're, I would say, more disappointed in is that state assessments accurately gauge students' understanding of standards. And I think the point that Dr. Markley made is accentuated here. We've now added the standard six. That's a part of teacher evaluation which connects directly the outcomes for students. And so, if teachers aren't comfortable in the validity and reliability of those outcomes, they're very uncomfortable with those being associated with their evaluations. So, I, I very much understand the, the first response. I'm very concerned about the, the last one because of the impact that it does have on teachers.
Dr. Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you happen to know if that, if this, that trend is the case across the state for that last?
Yes, ma'am. With the, the, this is not specific to New Hanover County Schools. The, across the state, there was a dip.
Okay.
I don't know to the very degree. I definitely can get you that information. But yes, across schools, across the state, there, this was an area of challenge for us. And you can already see that prior to this survey, it was at 52, and then to lose, you know, almost 20 points, it's, it's very disturbing.
Anytime you're going to, you put in a new assessment, especially, and one especially where you saw the, the scores go down with a, with a new higher, with those higher standards, it doesn't surprise me to see that kind of drop in, in there. Add to that, we've gone through a fairly tough four or five years economically. And so, dollars for professional development and for, and for instructional support were some of those areas that we were, ended up, the state cut back on. So, it, it's, it doesn't surprise me that I see those kinds of numbers take a drop over the, over the, from survey to survey.
Well, I, I would agree with Dr. Markley's first point. I don't know that the professional development plays all that much into this. I mean, what we talked about, we talked about the end-of-year results last time was essentially that the, the way the state board does this is they get the raw scores and then they just sort of move the line for passing anywhere they want. And as a result, even though the number of items correct was about the same year-to-year, the pass rates were dramatically lower just because they just decided to move the passing rate around arbitrarily. So, you know, if I'm a teacher and the state is, of course, doing that, so test scores are going down, and at the same time, I'm going to be evaluated based on some arbitrary, you know, number that some statistician comes up with, with really no rhyme or reason, of, of course, I'm going to give that type of rating. So, I mean, I think it's just, I mean, we, we learned last year that the results of these tests are completely arbitrary.
Well, and I, I would, you and I have had conversations.
Yes.
About the lack of instructional materials for the students and the lack of support for them. So, it's difficult to plan for an end-of-grade assessment or end-of-course assessment when you don't know what you're being assessed on. And then a lot of times, what, and you, when you get to the exam on the high school level, you know, specifically, it, it reflects nothing of what you've learned or very little. And so, then there's a curve. And so, does this reflect what your, what your student actually learned? No, it doesn't because there is a disconnect on the state level. And it's, I'm, I'm hoping the state is looking at this saying, well, it wasn't good in the first place and now it's worse. But, you know, the, the students need instructional support.
And one additional thing that I would say in reference to this area, to, to somewhat mitigate what the, the concerns of teachers and what our challenges are right now, we are working to increase our use of formative assessments because as a part of the evaluation process, principals can look holistically at the teacher and look at multiple indicators, not just that standard six. And so, we're using formative assessment to, to help build that body of evidence so that teachers know what children are learning and understand and, you know, and are able to do. But principals also know that that's individual score is not the whole of the child, nor is it the whole of the teacher in terms of what happens in that classroom.
And the formative assessments are designed by whom?
Um, we, right now, are currently using SchoolNat, and so, that is a bank of questions that, some of them transitioned from ClassScapes. Some of them have been designed by teachers to be inputted into that system. And actually, I don't know if this has been formally announced, but as a district, we have 19 teachers that were selected as a part of the Governor's Teaching Network, and many of them are going to be working this summer to design assessment items and to do work related to that. So, we'll actually have some of our teachers working to enhance that database. And then some of those items have been purchased commercially.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And then last, in terms of the graphs, the survey, for the most part, and I don't get to see the survey per se, I get to see the survey results. So, one of the last questions that, that they share results around is, my school is a good place to, to work and learn. And you can see that in 2012, once again, above 80%, we had 81.9% of those teachers that chose to respond indicating in agreement that their school is a good place to work and learn. And so, we're very proud of the fact that in 2014, we've seen a slight uptick. Now, that's not a big jump, but we do feel that this is trending in the, the right way. So, given all of the challenges that our teachers are facing, all of the changes that are occurring, our teachers, for the most part, feel that their schools are good places to work and learn. And then in summary, you know, for the most part, our results have been consistent. We've noted some areas where we've had some significant dips. We, I think it's important to acknowledge that there are certain things that are happening that are outside of our control, and that has manifested itself in the survey results. There was increased agreement in, you know, the questions of good place to work and learn as well as safety of the work environment, and I think those two areas are critical. Additionally, the, I've listed those constructs where we have seen, for the most part, increases as well as those constructs where we've seen, for the most part, decreases in the comparison of the two survey years. Our teachers and administrators remain committed to serving our students, but recognize that given the increased requirements and increased demands, that that has become more complex. And then also, schools must intentionally address the conditions in which students and teachers work and learn. And so, with that shared, I've got just a little additional information that we're going to be using with principals and sharing with schools. This is the Data Use Guide. So, it provides guidance to our principals and our school improvement teams on how they can use this information to make their schools stronger and to, to make their schools more supportive for teachers. And then the last two pieces to this are actual sample worksheets where schools will identify target areas. So, if you've got an area that's below 80% or an area that's maybe below 70% or an area that you just want to emphasize, schools can use this worksheet to plan and develop a strategy around how to improve that for teachers because we know that research has shown us that working conditions matter. If we want to retain the best teachers that we can, we have to ensure that they're working in an environment that is supportive to them. So, with that said, I'd be glad to entertain any additional questions that you might have.
Yeah, those reports, the teacher working conditions, one is open and available to the public.
Yes.
Online. You just simply type in teacher working condition survey, and it'll take you straight there. You've got every district in the state, and they break those districts down into the schools.
Any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Smith.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Did we do the, did, did you have the, the indicator questions? Was that done in 2012 as well?
That is a worksheet that schools can use.
Yeah, was the worksheet.
But yes, that, that, that sheet is, was available in 2012. Yes.
There are some areas that look, you know, they really, they were, I was looking specifically at managing student conduct. The first two areas really didn't budge, and those numbers were not that high to begin with. So, are there cer, certain areas we're targeting as a district?
Well, as a district, we're looking at professional development. Well, as a district, we're looking at professional development overall. But I would encourage every school improvement team, every school, to go back and pull out their own working condition survey and to identify what their priorities need to be. But as a district, we're going to be working on the, the professional development piece.
And you feel like that's going to raise the, the findings at the managing student conduct level?
Well, not specifically to that. My area, of course, is profession, well, instruction. And so for me, the direct connection would be the professional development. Now, as a senior leadership team, you know, we can have additional conversations about how we might want to use this, especially as we build out and work with our principals in our upcoming principals administrative retreat.
But I would tell you, principals have already sat down with their, in a lot of cases, with their staffs and looked at the areas that they weren't happy with. For example, Bob at Alderman has already sat down with his school improvement team and said, these are the areas on the survey that didn't come out the way I thought they would. Let's have a conversation about those. So this becomes a real conversation starter for those. And it's neat to look at, because for Bob, this was his first full survey. And so when you, when you've got somebody who, you want to look at where he was when he started and where he is now two years later, and he's, there were some areas that he's seen some, some improvements in. And he sits down with his staff and says, okay. He does, he does his own follow-up survey with his staff about those particular areas that he sees that they think need to be, they need to work on. And you'll see that most principals will do that, or they'll have a conversation coming back at the beginning of the year. Survey said this is the area we need to work on, so this is what, tell me, tell me where we fell down on this, and then they build from there.
So, so for the schools, though, you know, and I think as a, as an overall aggregate of the district, you know, things look fairly, fairly good. I mean, there are, as you said, there are some areas where there's, there are issues that are sort of out of our control. Professional development has been one of those issues that is tied so closely to funding that it, it, it doesn't surprise me that those scores were a little lower. But when you drill down into the individual schools themselves and you look at, there are, you know, there are some schools where you compare the 2012 results to the 2014 results, particularly in the teacher leadership and school leadership positions or questions, there are some significant drops. And when I say significant, twenty to thirty percent drops in some areas. And so, you know, for, for these schools where there are, there are some problems, I think at the building leadership level, what is, what is the plan of action for, for these schools? Are there, you know, because are we, are we going to wait another two years for another survey? Or are we going to continue to monitor that and?
Well, it depends on the circumstances. For example, if you had a brand-new principal, I'd, I'd look at the survey for that first year, and the question is, as a new principal, sometimes if I followed somebody who was very popular or I followed somebody who was lax, for lack of a better term, and I came in and made a lot of changes in the school, I would expect to see a drop that first year in working condition surveys.
I would agree with that.
And so then you look at down the road, you have a conversation, you dropped some points here, but you made some changes, and you probably made some folks unhappy. Did I see some other results that go with it? For example, did graduation rates go up? Did test scores go up? And if those went up and you still had that issue, you look at those, and then you say, are we going to see some improvement two years down the road when folks get used to that change? Now, if it's a veteran principal and you've been there a long time and you see that kind of significant drop, then that begs a different question and a different conversation with that principal.
Right, because in, in the comments or, you know, in the, in the, I'm trying to think of what this is called, the Data Use Guide, one of the, you know, number three, the perceptual data are real data. And it, it may not be the perception of the principal or the administrative leadership, but this to them is real as, as educators. And if, if morale is so low that they're, they don't feel comfortable going to their administration and talking about or bringing issues to them that they're going to get resolution, they're going to be, they're going to continue to be problems, it impacts the students.
Yes.
So I think it's very important to, to make sure that we are, are getting regular feedback from our, from our teachers because they don't have, really have the ability to, you know, to, to talk about these issues. Some of them feel uncomfortable doing that. And I, and I think it's important that we give them as, as much opportunity as we can to, to find out, you know, what's going on in your building? How, how are you feeling about, you know, your, your leadership there? And, and, you know, do you feel that they go to you for, you know, for questions? Or do you feel that you can go to the, the leadership? So I think it's important, that two-way communication is very important.
One of the things I like about this survey is it's not a district survey. It's not even really a state survey, but it's administered sort of outside of the, the regular process, and there's, it's a completely anonymous survey. And it's taken a while for some folks to, to trust this, to, to take this. And that's why you've seen participation rates slowly increase to the point to where they are. But.
Is there, is there, you know, would there not be a, a need in some areas for more regular survey results?
Yeah, I would say not as detailed, not the multi-hundred-question survey like this. But if you could pick out twenty-five or thirty questions that relate to, like, the time-on-task state kinds of questions, set those aside. But if I had a place where I thought there was a need for this, we could go in and do a mini-survey. John has several in HR that if we felt was something we needed to continue to monitor that we could use.
Well, I wouldn't want to necessarily target specific people because I don't want, you know, but I think it, I think it would be important especially because I think after two years, you know, if, if there are issues within the building that could have been addressed within a year, you know, then they would, you know, we, we can hit those problems before they become serious issues.
Exactly.
Thank you for your presentation.
Oh, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. At this time, we've been asked to take a short break. Let's take a five-minute break.